Hi again.
What's up?
Yeah.
Ever since I got fever.
Yeah, you want to eat it all, you're young. Just want to eat it all.
Mine started when they did, after they did this thing. I had a couple of cases, so you'll get better.
I gotta tell somebody not to go. I said, I'm going across from the eighty, and I am six years old.
Wait for it.
Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Just how we'd like to call the board a zoning meeting to order. If you're here for the plan commission, it will meet immediately after. We are doing the zoning first, right Rebecca?
Yeah.
Okay. The first item of business will be the minutes of our meeting. We have on June the third. Does everyone have a chance to look over those? Do we have a motion on those minutes?
I make a motion to dispense with the regular minutes, exactly as they are.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next is, uh... It's a review of a variance request. And this is on Brent Street. Jason, you want to present that to us? Tell us a little bit about it.
We're looking at where we tore the old feed mill down. I hated to tear it down because I wanted to keep it because I thought it was so neat. But due to the nature of the building, I called two companies out of, out of state. One from Alabama, one down in Georgia, to see if we could repair it. We couldn't, so I tore it down because I had homeless people going in there. But I want to build back. I'm asking for a variance where I can come back in and build sort of the same footprint. Put a wraparound porch, but make it look like an older building, but a newer, a newer building. Put three shops to four shops in it. And I have a boutique in it, ice cream shop, different things in it. So we're hoping to bring a little life to that area, basically. And I'm asking for the variance where we can... I need the, I need the room because that lot's not that big. And if I can bring it up like the old feed mill, which I know I've got to be in variance with T-Dot and everybody. But that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, that old building had a lot of character to it. I know what you mean.
It did. And a lot of people took a lot of pictures, and I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to put a big wraparound porch, if y'all allow me. Put a big wraparound porch and make it, make it look like, like the other one.
Where your parking be in the back, I guess.
Yes, sir, the parking be in the back. I talked with the railroad company, and they said, listen, they don't care if I park them clear out under another log yard. They said they're not doing nothing with it, but, which I understand, my property is my property. Theirs is theirs.
Sure.
But they, they were good with it, so.
Do we have any questions for Jason?
Which building is it?
Which were Ralph Holder's willing shop, you know, was that, that building there? He was in. I guess one of the last ones that was in that building.
Ralph Holder, yes, sir, he was in it, and then I purchased it from him, and then after that, yeah.
Yeah. M.D. Olford was there at one time with you. It was a big operation.
It was, it was a big building.
Okay, you have any questions for Jason? I think you're all familiar with this property.
So the variance request is for ten feet on the front, fifteen feet on the left side, and twenty-five feet on the right side?
That's my recommendation. The, the whole building was pretty close to the, the lot lines on there. With that Chancery side being against Chancery, and I don't know the exact T-Dot right away within there, I would recommend doing a farther setback on that side. The, the other side, I don't have any concerns if that gets closer to that lot line, but I don't want any issues with T-Dot or potential starting to approach on there right away. So that would leave plenty on it. And then I'm just recommending a little bit, the front yard just come off a little bit of that road, just in case any improvements go there, or we have widened that road. We don't have any issues here.
Because that was my only question. If it, there's no, if there's plenty of room in the back, and there's no variance being requested on the rear setback, is there room to make that front setback more than ten feet?
A little bit, but if you start pushing too far back there, you're starting to get into parking. That, that lot kind of goes down and then tapers down, so it starts getting a little narrow. And so if you try to push it back any further, you're going to have to really start adjusting those sides more to get that.
And that, and that front street right now, it's over, it's way over a hundred and something feet or better.
It's, I don't think we would...
I've seen two or three tractor trailers in there. They, I mean, it's really, really watered up, yes.
This would keep it somewhat in the character of what it was. I think that's what he's trying to do, which, that's not a heavily traveled, and it is extremely wide street.
Right.
I don't think they'd be a problem with it, but... Is anyone in the audience here to comment on this? Do we have a motion on this request?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the request for variance for a ten-foot to front, fifteen-foot left side, twenty-five-foot right side setback.
Okay, we have a...
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? There being none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for being here. Okay, do we have anything else, Sean, that you want to bring?
I don't have anything else for, for this board.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Just time, we will move right into the plan commission, as the members come forward. Don't have a last four.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Jerry.
Disguise. Got these scrubs on. My wife makes me call it parenting, but I'm babysitting today.
There you go.
All my guys were on it.
Yeah. Okay, good morning again. Just time we'd like to call the plan commission meeting to order. The first item of business will be the minutes of the June third meeting. Does everyone have a chance to read over those?
I move to dispense with the reading and approve as read.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Now, we have a request, and this is for plant approval from preliminary plant on Wagner Street. This is for a five-watt subdivision.
So, my name is Nathan Melson. I'm with St. John Engineering. We're the civil engineer for the project. Yeah, this is going to be basically an extension of Wagner Street. If y'all have ever been over there, it just, the road ends and it goes down the hill. So, the plan is just to extend that road down to a cul-de-sac, meeting all the city standards, and do four single-family lots. And then at the fifth lot, at the end of the cul-de-sac, will be a twelve-unit townhome development, which I believe that came through a plan commission, I believe it was late last year, and the plan commission voted on, that was the allowable number of units for, to be able to be placed there.
That, that did come through with plan commission, that can, did come through to the BZA, and that was when, that were the sixteen units being in play on that. So that won't be exceeded with this proposal. It's just breaking off those few single families up front and the townhomes.
Is the crossroad Smith Street, is that?
Uh, I believe it is.
Okay. In the lot five, you enter it from, you enter it from Chancery Street? I was a little confused.
No, lot five, you would have, it would be, it's connected to the cul-de-sac. So you, you have frontage along the cul-de-sac.
So all the lots would be accessed off the continuation of Wagner Street. This is the property here, so it'll kind of come down cul-de-sac in there.
Okay. The lot five is the one that's got like a sinkhole on it, is that correct?
Back down in here, there is a...
Yes, there, and I, and I analyze the stormwater, assuming that that sinkhole fills in and can't be, you know, and seeing where that would actually, what water level would come, say, you know, a twenty-ten flood happened in McMinnville. And so basically, our design for that will account for those water surface elevations if that were to ever happen, so. But yes, there is sinkholes down there. We're not going to be modifying that at all, because that is the only outlet for that area, for any stormwater to be relieved. There's no spill over into, you know, stream or anything. It all drains down to that depression.
Sean, though, the city controls a lot of the sinkholes. Do they control that one, or is that just a development?
We don't, that's on private. And I know there's been discussions with the, with the firm, with Scott St. John and Lyndon on this for quite a bit. And part of that was when this, these were originally subdivided up here. There's been a lot of discussions and looking at, at all the possibilities on that, so.
So we, of course, will have, in, in the process of getting the construction plans approved, we will have to get that sinkhole permitted with T-Deck and with the city, so everybody's fully aware, because we, stormwater will continue to drain to it, so, and we won't be prohibiting that.
See, board members, have any questions?
What's your estimated project budget at the end of the, the build-out? Or do you have any ideas on it?
We, we haven't gone through and gotten the project budget just yet, so we haven't looked at the numbers for that.
What is the white zoning? Like, I'm assuming the red zoning is the C?
So this one is, is zoned R-two. This, this map is not updated. The red is C-two. This color is going to be R-two. The dark yellow is R-three. This is industrial. All the lighter here is R-one. This got rezoned a little over a year ago, yeah, so.
So R-two extends, how far, how do you think, the whole, that whole piece?
The sinkhole?
Yeah, like, R-two comes all the way out into the...
R-two would come all the way to this property line here. Yeah, and then there's a little bit down here, too.
Yeah, we're, we're seeking just to meet current zoning, and, but to include that with the townhomes, that was approved variance, so.
And all the lot sizes meet minimum requirements for R-two.
Okay. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Sean, do you have any further comments?
The preliminary plan meets all the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations and staff would recommend approval.
Sean, do you have copies of this plant in the office yet?
Uh, we got a base elevated one on there, yeah.
I'd just, I'd like to see a final plan when, you know, when, when we do a final plan on it.
Yeah, that, that was, that was delivered today.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the, we got the preliminary plan, and it'll have to come back through approval before final plan approval.
Yeah, okay.
Back before this board, or?
Yes.
Yeah, this is preliminary plan here.
If you guys want, I can go print one out, if you want to take a look at it real quick. It'll take me two seconds. I can run over there and get one.
I have a copy here, if y'all want to pass around, but it's just...
I think the, the city's using up a lot of land that previously we didn't use, because we're running out of, of any, any land to use, and since we can't incorporate.
And I, I've tried to exclude that plaque, it just got shrunk down on the page. But you can see this, it shows lot four, this is lot five, which is towards that end. And then where that cul-de-sac is, and that'll be showing more on that plaque going around. Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes it cuts it off once it gets to that point.
It's got, it's got sewer.
Okay, do we have any more comments on these requests? Do we have a motion on this request?
Some.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? There being none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, Sean, you want to comment anymore on the compliance with the...
Yes, so what this is, is I got two updates. One is there was a new law that just passed that takes effect today, oddly enough, so July first, and that is child care family home is now considered a residence or residential use for zoning purposes for the state of Tennessee. I don't know what all came about, but most time those changes stem from statewide issues. And so I am, what I'm proposing is, currently we have it listed as a special exception in R-two, R-three, R-four, and R-five. Removing that as a special exception, as it's now a permitted use, and then adding it as a use for all residential zone districts, so that we have that compliance. And then the other is an old one, TCA Title thirteen twenty-four one oh one. That one's actually quite a bit older one, and that is for group homes. Again, this similar to this, and the other ones, we have to allow that. I think just adding it into the regulations makes it more clear. If something to arise, then we know that that is a permitted use in those zone districts, hopefully avoid any, any issues from one of it came about, so.
Will y'all handle that in-house on all of requests?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to, if we approve?
Yeah, because that's why I have to go to the board to amend the zoning regulations.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more comments, discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, okay. Okay, do we have any staff updates?
I know we got one more. There's one more amendment on here to section fourteen six oh two.
Okay.
So this is site plan. Currently, the way it reads is for multifamily. We, the planning commission would approve those site plans. There's a couple of different factors where that kind of gets in audit. Besides R-three, where that would be a permitted use. If it's a special exception, it's coming in front of the BZA. You guys are looking at a base site plan approving that special exception. I'm looking at it. When we get the building permit, we require a site plan. I'm looking at it again. The other issue is last year, a law was passed where, once I get a building permit application, we have ten days to provide comments and/or approve that permit. If not, they can withdraw the request from us, apply it to the state fire marshal, and have a third party do all inspections on those permits. So with that ten-day window, it makes it real difficult if I get that site plan to get it scheduled for a planning commission meeting, which isn't happening for the next month. So we could put that in the comments, you need planning commission approval, but that is delaying the projects. And again, I'm going to look at that site plan. They're not going to be able to do it if it's not meeting. If there's a variance request, it would come in front of the BZA. Outside of that, this just clarifies that. We don't require any other site... We don't require any other site plans coming in front of this board for approval. I believe the original got put in there as TCA Title 13, any new roads that are proposed, which a lot of times these multifamily developments may have, like Yeager Apartments is one that came off, there was a new road installed in there. Those new roads do come in front of the planning commission for approval because most time it's going to be tied to a subdivision. We have a rarity that it would be on the multifamily, so I think it just kind of got tied to that. And so that's why I'm recommending that change, is just to alleviate that and not have the oddities with the timeframe and be able to make sure we meet that 10-day requirement.
But you could actually regulate that by the 10 days, just reviewing it 10 days before, if you chose to.
Yeah, I can see, I can see comments that this would have to be approved by the planning commission. Again, that just kind of lazy. If I get it the first of the month, then we're waiting for 30 days to get it on there. And so I think that's just something to consider on that. And again, the site plan requirements, everything is going to stay the same, what they have to show, do all that. And like with the little subdivisions, I could, would be gladly to do a report to you guys if you want. Hey, this is the site plans we got here, it is, this is where we got them.
Okay. Do we have any more questions on this?
I'd like to hear an update on the red road denial. I guess it was two meetings ago that we approved that at this board. Is that correct?
Wagner, Wagner Street off Red.
Yeah. And I, I was just curious if we had an update on why, why that was denied or on what grounds the.
It was a split vote. I don't know all factors that, those who voted, know, I don't know their reasoning 100% so. Stormwater was brought up, that did seem to be a concern to some, but outside of that, there was no direct reasoning given, so I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that bit.
Does that procedurally, does it die since we didn't pass it or?
And they can appeal it, can't they?
They can't, I don't know how that works with the split vote, because I think that if I'm a caller, if it's split, then the motion dies.
Well, it still has to have a second reading, too, does it not?
I wasn't sure on that because with the split vote, I would think maybe, but I'm, I'm not sure on that procedural standpoint, how that, that worked.
I talked to them after the meeting. I, I don't think they're going to appeal it or anything. I might be wrong, but. We'll see, I guess.
That's what we're saying with that.
And my major concern is that, you know, I've heard from other aldermen, you know, concerns over, you know, future finances for the city and encouraging, you know, how do we bring in those dollars? And when we have these developments that are in good locations, you know, encouraging that puts more tax dollars into our city budget, and I just wanted to make that statement.
Well, tell those members of the board, please.
I, I have no argument against that.
Yeah.
But sometimes they split uses for property. I mean, just because you have a request, it doesn't mean that's the best use for the property, especially if it's under current zoning for use that it could be used for.
Yeah.
So there's different variables, you can't just say you got to approve every one. And I like to see more building in the city because it helps all of us, you get more tax, it's land being used. Okay, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, on that update, yeah.
Okay. Most to approve. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it carries. Okay, now we're ready for the staff updates.
I don't have any. I am looking at one, I got one more thing. I'm kind of looking at a potential, maybe middle ground that can raise some concern with rezonies and that type of stuff, that maybe we can try to proceed forward with, so.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
The question we was talking about, you was looking at that 10-day period, and we got off on the other question. Did we, are we got, do we got a vote on that, giving you the approval to?
Yeah, that motion was made. You guys just went on the, yeah. Yep, we're good.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a wonderful 4th of July. Thank you.